... regular city council meeting for City Medical Lake from Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Stand up and pledge allegiance.
For the leaders of the United States of America. And his great father, Richard Sanders. One vision of the number one invisible liberty and justice for all.
Roll call here, Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Maynard here, Councilmember Spears.
President.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Present.
Harville.
Here.
Oh, President, thank you. Um, approval of the agenda, um, I will note that we have two email comments. And I believe all council have received those, and so just making note of that to recognize, uh, any changes or additions to the agenda. Okay, then I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, as submitted, um, this is the opportunity for interested citizens and comments, um, any audience, um, requests. Um, anything on the? None?
No, nobody's saying that.
Zero then, and, uh, anyone online that has a comment? This is your opportunity, you'll be given another opportunity at the end of the meeting, or anyone in, um, the room today that would like to say something, okay? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on, uh, announcement, proclamation, special presentations, there are none for tonight. Uh, we'll move on then to council reports, Councilmember Pritchard.
Um, April thirteenth, two weeks from now, we'll have a Geo Watch, Steve Cooper's man, yeah, um, in Parkville, oh, sorry, I'm not taking that away from anybody. Yes, um, uh, but, oh, and the, the fire too, um, can I talk about that?
Sure.
Fire two's not here.
It's your moment, you can talk about what you'd like.
Yes, we sampled, we're still waiting on results to come back, but, but the fire's definitely still going, and I talked to Department of, uh, of, of help, and they said if you do smell anything, make sure you go inside, um, and if you do smell anything, the Clean Air Board have it on their website somewhere, we can log, just be very descriptive about what smell do you smell. Yeah, and it does come in, you know, if there's inversion where the pressure's higher, lower elevations, it'll come in, so just be aware, I would think. I did, to my knowledge, and I've asked a bunch of people, it has not, the, smoke is actually not fantastic, what's it?
Okay.
I do want to say people that can smell it, get out of it, yeah, as opposed to me, who just seems to stay in.
Okay, and, um, ecology has taken control of that site just for the public's information, and, uh, I don't know, Sonny might want to add number to that, um.
Uh, no, yeah, and, uh, work continues, they're, yeah, identifying how they can safely mitigate the threats that exist, uh, so that they, and the fire department and ecology and DSHS are all collaborating in that effort to, uh, to try to quellch that fire.
Okay, very good, thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh, Finance Committee met tonight, we reviewed, um, all the claims, everything was, everything was good.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Spears?
Um, nothing to report at this time.
Are you hitting Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, no report, Your Honor.
Councilmember Maxwell?
No report, Your Honor.
Councilmember Olson?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay, Councilmember Harville?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, Parks and Rec met tonight, uh, Glenn's absent, and Sonny gave us an update, some updates on Glenn's behalf. Uh, they placed some of the boulders down the north end of the lake, and they still have some work to do there. We have a DaySmart Recreation Service Agreement for our recreation software, that Sonny will talk about later. Yard waste trailers are out, and the park is still officially closed with the anticipated opening of the fifth, and the trails are open.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Um, for mine, I just wanted to give a quick FEMA update with the fire recovery work, that that is ongoing. Encouraging anyone who's impacted by the fire, as well as, uh, businesses, can also apply for small, uh, for low interest loans, and it also has a contiguous counties around Spokane that are also eligible, um, for, uh, small businesses, those people who may have been impacted by the fire, impacted their business, um, but, uh, even folks who were pretty well insured are, um, getting some relief and extra help and opportunity for low interest loans, so I just want to encourage everyone to continue to seek that resource, they'll be, uh, taking applications until the twentieth of April. I'll let, uh, Sonny talk about the, um, additional funding we received for LeFay Street project, and I'll just turn the, this over to Sonny, so he can update, you know, how many great things are happening, see what he can.
So I'll share a couple, uh, beginning Mayor and Council, share a couple of things, and then I'll let, uh, Public Works and, uh, share, uh, some things as well. As the mayor was talking about, the FEMA, um, Disaster Resource Center is still open here in the city council chambers, and those days are Tuesdays to Saturdays now, so they're not open on Mondays, but and that work continues, and we encourage all who suffered loss to register with FEMA, there are still numbers, we know, there are those who have not registered, um, there is no penalty for registering, and so being able to just explore what eligibility exists, and then not even just the initial application, but continuing to provide the documents that they ask for, so you can see there's been a number of stories, uh, and instances where people have been given a letter to say, um, sorry, you're not eligible, but as you read down in that notice, there's additional information they're requesting from you, and people have come back in with that additional information. And, uh, and they're able to, they were able to get awards, so, uh, persistence pays, and we just encourage everyone who suffered any loss from the fire to please come and register with FEMA and SBA, um, and the deadline's April twentieth. And, uh, that's, um, oh, I was just gonna share, uh, as far as calendar things that we haven't talked about already, uh, the next weekly community meeting for the fire recovery is on the seventeenth of April, six thirty PM. Um, the planning commission meeting for this month is on the eighteenth, it's normally the fourth Thursday, but there was a conflict, so this month it'll be on the eighteenth of April, that's at five thirty PM, and we have, uh, a legislative recap town hall that Representative Graham and Representative Bowles would like to host in the community, that'll be April twenty-third here in the auditorium at City Hall, uh, at six thirty PM. And we encourage anyone who's interested to learn more about what happened in the legislative session to be present, if there's any questions, I'm sure they'd be loved, love to hear those questions, and I'll turn it over to Scott, uh, to share some public works updates.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Yes, sir.
We'll just see you guys tonight. Better know, we, we landed another grant, uh, the Complete Streets Grant, one point five eight six million dollars, trying to go in concert with, uh, with the seven, I think we've got, uh, the other TID grant is about seven hundred thousand, that was the restriping that I had you look at, and, and and that, that one will probably come in on the tail of this Complete Streets grant, we have to have this Complete Streets done by December. So, it's gonna be a lot of things happening really fast with this one. What it'll do, uh, I'll have drawings out, I just got it set today, and I was on the Jefferson job most of the day, so I'll give those drawings to you, so you can kind of see what it's gonna be, it's, it's exactly like the other drawings you have, but this one's gonna include, uh, pedestrian lights, uh, every, all new sidewalks from Hancock to Lad, in- instead of just piecemeal that we had in the first grant. Again, in the downtown district, it'll have lamp posts, both pedestrian and in the street, kind of dual pad, they call it, planners, there'll be water plumb, we have uh, for flower, flower pots, or whatever we choose to put in down there, to kind of warm the downtown. This will go all the way to nine oh two, once you get past Lad, those street lamps are gonna go every seventy feet, there'll be pedestrian lighting. We're gonna do both sides, all the way up to fourth, on the west side, on the east side, they're gonna go all the way to nine oh two. We're gonna ask for funding to finish the sidewalks from fourth all the way to the intersection at nine oh two. And, uh, so, this is a really good deal, our match is six percent of the, so it's a hundred thousand dollar match on our, our responsibility, so, really is a good deal. Um, doesn't change that drawing that you guys have from the first, uh, LeFay Street restriping, nothing changes, but we're getting all new sidewalks, flower pots. It's also gonna take out the electrical, and all this crossing mayhem we have down along, especially City Hall, there's that big pole on the corner. All those overhead power lines in the downtown district are gonna go away, we're gonna go underground with that stuff. Um, yeah, it, it'll really open up the downtown and warm it up, again, the speed limit's gonna drop to twenty-five in the downtown district, um, really a good deal. So.
It's a, the whole design is a traffic calming, um, you know, so everything down, come through town slow, stop and say, wow.
Yeah, let's, let's manage that, let's manage LeFay.
Yeah, well done, you know, you, you and your team, and Sonny, everybody did such a great job, and, um, engineering, of course.
Yes.
You know, for sure, it took a, uh, tiny village to put this together, but it really, really great.
Our Vista Red's gonna have a cap when I call in tomorrow, if this gets approved tonight, um, because that, that alone, that, those power lines and all that fiber that's crossing, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, as part of that grant.
Nice.
And that'll all go underground, so.
It's great.
Other than that, we did get rocks in on the north end, we still have a little work to do there, but we're just busy down there today. Jefferson Street started that, that waterline replacement, and we weren't on the job, they weren't on the job two hours, and I had to make an adjustment on, we have a six inch man that goes down Miller that doesn't have a, a blow off on the end of it. And it was, it needed hydrant, so, um, the crews worked late, and we got that in, so, anyway, that job's gonna move along, hopefully it didn't lose good. Um, we'll get that wrapped up as quick as we can. Um, the parks, I think waterfront, I think we're a go for this Friday for opening that park. I think there's enough signage where that fire is, I don't, I think they had no trespassing in there on that state side before, I don't expect there to be an issue. And then the city crews will manage the park, that if they have to do any more work this week, they're talking about planting seedlings.
Right.
And those, when those crews come in, we'll, we'll just adjust, or close spots where we need to, to get those crews in, you know, to do their stuff, so.
Is BNR providing the seedlings? Okay, very good, 'cause I know they talked about, maybe, maybe for twenty twenty-five for some of those, so that's really wonderful, we can get those in there, it was shocking, uh, Easter I came that way, every time I've come, you know, from that other way, it's just, oh, you know, breaks my heart to see what it looks, it's just, just old, you know, and.
And hopefully that opening waterfront will take some of the heat off of the north end.
Yeah.
As well.
Yeah, so, but thank you for all your work, I mean, it's been incredible.
Yeah, thank you for the north park, I think it looks great, I mean, I would.
Why it's not bad, now you got a big grant, you can redo the whole city.
They're still parking weird, but I, again, with opening waterfront, I think it'll take some of the pressure off of that.
It's already so, safer, I mean, the, yeah.
If you protect the pedestrians, that was the point, and when we get all of our land use things figured out, and then we actually design that parking, it'll, it'll have a, a better design, but no, but I think it's serving its purpose, so thanks for being so quick about that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, if we're taking out the power pole down frontier, there's so many provision for street banners, Founder's Day and Blue Waters?
No.
Or any other areas?
No more banners, yes, no, no, they, there will be some seventy, seven, they're thirty foot light poles, cobra heads, we'll call them.
The, the light poles.
That will, will be out there, so yes, well, those will be incorporated a- as well, so we can continue to do that.
Is that something Vista will take care of, but you know, in the future, or is that something gonna be us?
That's a future conversation, I haven't been there yet with the Vista, they may.
They've been so, such great customers, but.
They have been.
It's got a light bulb in it, we just, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just haven't been there with the Vista, but will. If we have to rent the truck, or some other cities do the same thing, so, but Vista's been great, right, I expect them to continue to do so.
It's a big question.
Yeah.
Any other questions, any other questions or thoughts to share? Thanks again, for all the great work you guys are really.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yes.
Appreciate you. Um, the workshop discussions, we'll move right to action items, we have a consistent agenda for the approval of the March nineteenth minutes, council had opportunity to review the minutes, any revisions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, in all in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, approval of the April second, twenty twenty-four Flames and Warrants, number five one one four seven, five one one eight five, in the amount of one hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-one cents.
Move to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously, Resolution twenty-four six sixty-eight, the Washington Military Department Public Assistance Grant Agreement, um, this is an open-ended agreement, um, and we've had some discussions about the kinds of things that we're going to pursue, I'll have Sonny review on that, please, Mr. Weathers?
Right, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Page seven.
Right, yep, page seven, your packets is the Washington Military Department Public Assistance Grant Agreement, Resolution twenty-four dash six six eight. Uh, major disaster declaration that was approved by President Biden in February resulted in federal disaster assistance that the city is eligible for, city made a request for public assistance related to the preliminary damage assessment on the PDA that was conducted shortly after the Gray Road Fire, and this contract will encompass the entire disaster, so it is not project specific, so there is no dollar amount included, uh, so that we really can explore all, you know, avenues as far as public assistance goes. Uh, one case in point that I will bring to your attention is that, um, the city did contract with a company to remove dead and fire damaged trees from four parcels that burned, um, severely, and that was at a cost of eighty thousand dollars. And, uh, we have not had any avenue to recoup those dollars yet, but those, uh, those, that cost is eligible under this public assistance, uh, and so we'll be pursuing like items, uh, with this grant agreement, if it can gain your approval, uh, it does have the recommendation of staff.
Um, any questions or, uh, discussion that we need to have related to this, we've talked about some, they were coming, but, um, anything further?
We're just moved to have to.
Thank you.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any discussion? When that Resolution twenty-four six sixty-eight passes?
I have a curiosity, so that's, um, is there, where are we on the grant for sewer and water? Or sewer lake and water, is that, is that somewhere just in the?
It's not in this tonight, but we are moving forward, uh, still, um, can we bring, can we talk about that after we get through the resolutions, because it's not on the agenda, but we can have some.
It's kind of popped in my head, it's like.
All right, put a pin in it, we'll be right back. Um, Resolution twenty-four six sixty-nine, the DaySmart Recreation, uh, Service Agreement, that's on page forty-four, um, it's seventy-two hundred dollar annual fee for three years, it's an agreement, this does replace the Tyler, um, product that we had that was poor, um, Sonny, anything else you wanna add?
Uh, just, yeah, this happens to be the final year of the city's contract with Tyler Recreation, we have had, um, some issues that we've attempted to resolve over, uh, our time using it, and those, um, the resolution of those issues just does not come, and it has not been addressed, uh, to our liking, and so, um, Glenn, in his foresight, uh, looked to say, uh, and, and budgeted ten thousand dollars for professional services, which this would be included under, uh, to look at new recreation software that would, um, shore up some of the concerns that we, and, and issues we've had to deal with over the years, uh, and that, um, something which, uh, here, here's just kind of a quick list of online experience for customers was a challenge, uh, lack of desired functions inside of it, even though it is a Tyler program, and we use Tyler for our accounting, uh, the two programs don't talk together very well, and so, um, there was an assumption that it was gonna be, oh, it's in the same family, it should be this great complimentary, um, option, but it really hasn't, uh, turned out to be that, and, and it also, um, yeah, so the poor communication with our accounting software, Glenn explored a number of options, um, and, and the recommendation is, at the DaySmart Recreation, they offer an easy to navigate and positive online experience, it includes, uh, facility and resource rentals, which is a fantastic option, um, we use a, a different, we just use Outlook calendars currently, and so, and we've had issues where um, inadvertently, uh, areas have been double booked, and we end up with, you know, communication challenges that way, so having the software to account for spaces, uh, plus, uh, as we look forward to potentially someday, maybe having um, RV sites for rental, uh, that's already a, an avenue that's included in this software suite. The, what else, it also manages team assignments, that's something what we've had to do manually before as well, because, uh, they just didn't have the function to be able to do so inside the program, but, um, so a lot of efficiencies that can be built, plus, um, it, you know, so all that data is consolidated for increased efficiencies as far as rec programming and, and facility use goes, and the agreement includes a one thousand eight hundred dollar savings in annual subscription costs, and, uh, unlimited user accounts and twelve hours of free virtual training, that would allow us to go live this fall, so while we still have a working option, although it's a challenge to us, we still have a working option, we can explore and add this new, uh, feature, test it out, uh, essentially, while we're still having the ability to do everything moving forward, so.
And what was the procurement process, is this off of our, one of our vendor lists, or?
Um, so for, uh.
I was just thinking, the three years makes it twenty-one thousand, which is.
It's, uh, and procurement is based on the annual, and, uh, and also for a service rather than a good, um, that fell under and doesn't require.
Very good, I just said no, because it was three years, you, it was, you included all of that, but it's just the annual?
Yep, and.
Very good.
The contract itself.
It's under the seventy-five hundred, very good, okay? Any other, uh, questions or comments, concerns?
You mentioned downstairs that it will interface with our current budget software, correct?
Yeah, so my understanding is that it, it communicates more effectively than the Tyler Recreation Program, so as we receive those revenues, it can report, um, it, it has an ability to communicate and report that to our accounting software.
Have an interface, well, so Tyler, as you know, uh, anyone who's been to Tyler and government products, they started off as one company and then accumulated others, and as they bought, bought, they just become plugins, and they don't always work well together, and so this happens to be one of those that doesn't work so well, so.
Yeah, somebody that coaches soccer, I would greatly appreciate something better than what you have now, even though it's a little more expensive, it's, it would make life fun.
But we'll still keep Tyler for accounting budgets.
Yeah, I'm not ready to let go, but.
No, and it does well, it works well for what it was initially designed for, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, oh, there was something else I was gonna share about that, oh, uh, so, some of the other programs similarly, um, have the modules, and so whatever module you want to add, you pay additional for that module. This is an enterprise solution, so we get all the core functions under this, uh, using them or not, and we get them, and so the savings that, um, is available, which is why we're bringing it to you now as well, now, is, is under a timeframe. Um, and so they extended it so that we could have this discussion and explore the opportunity of entering into this agreement.
Anything else, otherwise I entertain a motion to approve?
I move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, unanimous, uh, Resolution twenty-four six six nine passes, um, Resolution twenty-four six seven zero, the TIV grant award, this is LeFay Street, SR nine oh two, um, pedestrian bike improvements, uh, from page fifty-one, this is the one point six or one point five eight six million, um, which Scott was, uh, was telling us about, uh, in our map, you'll see on page fifty-nine, it's a hundred and one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, uh, so do you want to brief us on?
So you defer to Mr. Duncan, if he has any more to add? For the Complete Streets.
Anything further you want to add?
No, I think they're, they're a match by a half percent, so, I'd happy to address any questions if we have them.
For sure.
I haven't told cause yet, but.
But that's in your budget, I mean.
Yes.
It was already. Okay, uh, if there's no further discussion or questions, uh, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Uh, motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous passage of Resolution twenty-four six seven zero, thank you so much, Council, uh, public hearings are not scheduled, we have two ordinances, the first is the ordinance, one one two two, the historic preservation, um, we have for preservation.
Yeah, we did, uh, Logan, who does from the historic preservation office, if, uh, and he brought a presentation, uh, he wasn't able to join us, as you recall, from our last meeting and discussion, but he did, um, go the extra mile to review, uh, the meeting and came uh, prepared to address some of the questions and concerns that were brought up, so I'll turn it over to Logan.
Welcome, Logan.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yeah, again, my, I just turned on being at the last meeting, um, and so I did watch the meeting back, and just started having all your questions and some concerns, and, uh, it's not the most exciting presentation, 'cause it's mostly words, but it'll help keep me on track, to make sure I address all of your questions, so, here we go.
Turn it on, then we'll, on, but.
No, it's on, did what?
I can do it.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Well, one of the main questions, uh, this is more on the ILA side, I remember that, in order for the ILA to be signed, the ordinance has to be passed first, um, but you all had some concerns, and, and so did uh, Medical Lake's legal team about the indemnification clause, which I should say is over my head, as a historian and not an attorney, um, but we have both Medical Lake and Spokane County legal teams working on that, um, and they're gonna try to come up with some substitute language for clause five C, um, which was the one that was particularly concerning, and Sonny and I will have an update on that, uh, when we circle back to the ILA, uh, like I said, hopefully the attorneys can, uh, help us with that. Um, one of the questions was, what happens if the population of Medical Lake exceeds five thousand people at the next census? I, again, I'm gonna have to circle back on this one, um, but I did contact Commissioner French, um, and I asked Commissioner French about this concern, and I asked if it would be possible, potentially in the ILA itself, um, to provide some sort of assurance, um, that if the, that if the agreement is signed before, um, the population equals five thousand, that it, the agreement could stay in place indefinitely, uh, or until, until it was terminated for some reason by one of the parties. Um, I, Commissioner French responded to me quickly, and seemed to think that that was something that he could work on, um, and that was just last week when I was talking to him about it, so hopefully he'll follow up with me quickly, and again, I'll, I'll circle back to that, or I, I or Sonny will circle back to that, um, when, um, we come, when the ILA resolution comes up. Um, one of the questions, I think from, um, Commissioner Kennedy, or Councilmember Kennedy, uh, was about owner consent and just added regulation, um, and so I just kind of wanted to run through that, that, that owner consent is required to list any property on the Spokane Register of Historic Places, um, in section one point four eight point one three zero of the county code, um, it says that any nomination to be listed, for property be, to be listed on the register, um, must bear the signature of the property owners. Um, so there won't be any listing of properties without the property owners consent. Um, there's also some question about, like, well, what if a property is sold, um, and, and I had some of your discussion, you said that's something that, that is the job of the buyer to understand, um, but it isn't a mystery, um, when any property is listed on the register, um, with the Spokane County Auditor, a notice that that property is listed on the historic register will be filed in association with that piece of property, and so when your title report is done, or when your Realtor's doing that due diligence for you, and that's something that they should come across. Um, no surprises is our goal, um, we don't want somebody to end up owning a historic property who didn't want to own a historic property, um, so we try to be as, as careful with that as possible. Um, and then also just like added regulation, yeah, if a property is listed, it, it has to play by the rules, um, but there's no historic preservation regulations that would extend to any properties that are not listed on the historic register. And feel free to stop me if you have questions, or we can, at the end, run through questions, either it's good or bad. Um, what happens if the ILA is terminated? Um, that, you know, there's a termination clause in the ILA that, um, basically gives either party the ability to terminate. the ability to terminate. And so what would happen? Say, let's just come with a hypothetical that the program goes on for about five years and say we list four or five properties on the on the Spokane Register that are within Medical Lake. And then the the agreement is terminated for some reason. We don't we don't need to figure out what the reason is. This question is tough. That that situation has never happened before. And the closest analogy that I have is the city of Spokane Valley. When the city of Spokane Valley was unincorporated, we did list some properties on the Spokane Register within Spokane Valley. When it incorporated, they did not form their own preservation program and nor did they sign an LA ILA with our office to continue to provide those services. So while there are a few properties in Spokane Valley listed on the register, our office has no authority to review changes to them, has no authority to provide the special tax valuation to them or any other incentives. One of the questions was, well, what happens to the incentive if it was already in place? And and we asked the county assessor and he said it wouldn't matter as long as the property was listed at the time, the incentive went into place, it would go for the end for its full 10 year period and then it would fall off. But but if the property owner did another phase of work, for example, they wouldn't be able to apply again unless there was some sort of a preservation program in place. Can a property be removed from the register? That was another question that was coming up. And in most cases, a property cannot be removed from the historic register. However, in the county code in section 1.48.270, there is a process outlined for demolition of a historic property. And they seem counterintuitive, but the process does facilitate a discussion between the Landmarks Commission and the property owner to try to come up with some sort of alternative to demolition. There's a couple of waiting periods, I think it's 30 days to to have this discussion period and then additional 45 days to try to come up with another sort of last minute solution. But ultimately, our office or the commission cannot deny demolition. And so if a property owner is set on doing that, they could go ahead and demolish the property. If a property was demolished, at that time, we would remove it from the Spokane Register Historic Places because it wouldn't exist anymore, so.
So, yeah, if this historic property happened to be in great fire area and burned.
Yeah, can we click the next one for me?
With the property.
So what about if there's a spot? You're 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 just giving me the nice segue to my next slide. I like it. There are limited situations where it is appropriate to remove a property from the historic register. I said usually we don't, but in some cases we do. The most typical scenario is is when a property is damaged and it and it makes it so it's not recognizable anymore. Either it's it's completely destroyed or insurance says that's a total loss or even it's a partial loss and this half needs to be rebuilt. Our office would never require the property owner to reconstruct it to match its historic appearance and we would remove the property from the register if and now say the property owner was like, well, no, I do want to build it back to how it historically was. Okay, well, then we'll work with you on that and give you some technical advice to try to get it back to its historic characters and appropriate siding, say just half burned or something. But but it would we would never force somebody to reconstruct it in its historic form. And if if the property owner was looking to just go a different direction, again, we would remove it from the historic register. Does that answer that question? Can you make changes to your property? Yes, our office, first of all, does not review any changes to the interior of the of of any property that's listed on the register. We don't care what you do on the inside of your house. We only review changes to the exterior. So like, what kind of things? Mostly additions, new siding, new windows, new wood. Those are basically the things that we review. Anything that is considered maintenance, so you know, your bricks need to be repainted or your house needs to be repainted, those are things that we would not review. There is a process called the Certificate of Appropriativeness Review Process, and you can see more about that in sections 1.4026, 1.48260 and 265. But you might be thinking like, how long does this review process take? Most reviews are completed administratively, just by staff. There's two of us and we usually can get them all done in two business days is our commitment, usually much faster. But if it was a big change, say somebody wanted to add, say the Hallid House or the castle was listed and someone wanted to put a big addition on the front of the house. That's something that we would need to bring before the Landmarks Commission for their review and that can take anywhere from 14 to 30 days, mostly just because we need to notice the meeting, just like you all's meetings need to be noticed. And so it's really just about our notice requiring, but we meet once a month and we get that on our first available agenda. And there's some questions about the commission. First of all, it's a large commission, as somebody pointed out, why is that the case? The the code says that we have to have the professional makeup that includes two architects, one general real estate appraiser, one construction specialist, two historians, two county at-large members, so meaning that don't live in the city of Spokane, but can live in unincorporated or small towns in Spokane County, two folks in the city of Spokane who are just that large, and one archaeologist or anthropologist. And the concept here is that there's a variety of folks at the table with different experiences, some who are thinking about the value of a property and what this means, somebody who's an expert on construction and how something can be repaired reasonably at reasonable cost, some folks who just care about history, and then also some some professional historians or archaeologists, anthropologists. And so could we have one less of these potentially? But this is how it was crafted when the the crafters of the ordinance put it together and I think it works pretty well. Here is the current commission right now. There's some questions about the tax incentive and I know I'd given like a little example last time for a downtown building, I figured I'd just do another building again so we can kind of get an idea. This building is about, this is the Hallid House or Castle and it's currently valued in in the 24 evaluation. It's just the building, not the land, at 711,000 and change. In order to qualify for the incentive, you need to spend 25% of the assessed value of the building, which in this case is kind of a lot, 177,885. But let's say that this project needed a new roof, new HVAC, I think it's currently apartments, so say somebody was going to turn into a B and B and they needed to do some tenant improvements to each of the rooms and they spent $250,000. The building, the assessor is still going to come around and do his regular assessments. And so let's say he noticed some work went on and the new assessment is 750,000. We would work with the assessor to subtract the amount that was spent, so $250,000 from the assessed value, whatever it is, if it goes up or down, we will continue to subtract 250,000 for 10 years. So in this in this case, instead of being taxed on 750, it would be taxed on 500,000. What does that just work out to brass tax? Basically, in this case, they would save about $2,750 per year in taxes for 10 years. So this isn't something that, you know, necessarily makes a project possible, but when somebody's considering a project, this can help it pencil out. It's basically you can get, you know, about 10% of the cost that you put into a project back. And then I just had one last slide, any of this wasn't necessarily one of your questions, but any other benefits? And I know there was some interest about just understanding Medical Lake history better and being able to use that history in part for tourism, but also for a sense of place and community. So annually, the state of Washington grants out money to historic preservation offices and each year we apply for that grant monies. Our current grant application is due at the end of April. And so we continue to move forward. Our me and my boss's concept is that we would apply to to do a to prepare a report on Medical Lake history and try to identify some existing buildings that help tell that story. Wouldn't be listing those buildings, we'd just be trying to understand better what is what is the story of Medical Lake, which many of you know, but just to get it on paper in in a clear way and then also to try to find some of that built environment that helps to tell that story. And if we didn't get this done in time, this is something that we could circle back to their annual grants and we have a really good track record of getting the grant monies we apply for. So those are all my slides and happy to answer any other questions or questions come up in your discussion. Happy to answer them that way as well.
Yes, I think very thorough, really appreciate that. Any other questions? All right, excellent.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first read ordinance 1122 on historic preservation.
Move to approve first read.
Do you agree?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
City of Medical Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 1122. An ordinance of the city of Medical Lake, Washington, adopting certain historic preservation provisions in Spokane County Code by reference and providing for the effective date thereof.
We have a motion to approve?
I move to approve. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have discussion on that. First read ordinance 1122 passes unanimously, that will be moved in for the second and final read at the next regulatory council meeting. First read ordinance of 1123, the right of way permit, I use requirement code. This also had some discussion from last time and we'll hear from Mr. Weathers and feel any questions. And then you'll have a reading.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor and Council. So ordinance 1123, right of way permit, use requirement code. Washington City's Insurance Authority, it's our it's our insurance pool, WCIA, conducted a risk management review of our right of way process in 2022, so not last year, but the year previous. And they noted how our current code language is quite old, it was adopted in the 70s. They also noted how it only addresses below ground utilities and it simply requires a traffic control plan, a $25 fee and a $1,000 performance bond for any work regardless of size in our right of way. During our public rights of way permit use requirements workshop at the March 5th council meeting, draft language was reviewed to provide a sure footing and satisfactory recourse for restoration and completion of unfinished work, allowing the city to adopt rules and policies consistent with the code. And I just want to remind or let you know that we face an exciting prospect of fiber to home internet coming to Medical Lake and cable television services being installed throughout the city in the very near future, which will introduce work that is extensive, the scope of work is extensive and impacts almost all of our rights of way. And staff is based on comments and conversations, staff is working to review and draft policies that will address impacts to homeowners and businesses and utilities in ways that balance management goals for the variety of activities that could happen, because not all activities are equal for sure. A public rights of way policy addressing previously stated concerns will be brought to council for discussion and action as soon as it is prepared. I am trying my darndest to get more out of every hour in the day. So but we will, we we're committed to doing that, it's important and we will bring that forward. Policy is always based on alignment with code though, so without defined code language, it's hard to define policies that are aligned. So staff recommends approval of ordinance 1122 prior to the forthcoming franchise agreement ordinances that will be entertained in the very near future to give us that sure footing and and adequate recourse for the worst worst case scenarios. Not that we anticipate terrible scenarios, but just want to make sure we got good ground to stand on and adequate resources we need recourse.
Mr. Weathers and I discussed this also again this morning and just made sure that those policies will address the difference between these large constructions, these large franchise agreements and then homeowner type projects and then the policy, you know, and procedures that would follow, then gives us something consistent to follow, but it's also easier to change a policy and procedure and then there's an ordinance, so ordinance are broad and then the policy and the procedure will get down into the minutia of the details and I believe, you know, as a member of stairs, you raised some great points and I know that you met and you feel satisfied that that your concerns were addressed, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and a lot of that was my my new newness with the way that the I didn't understand the way that the policies and procedures come after ordinance and will do that that greater refinement and that. So I I'm used to an electrical cookbook where everything is exactly detailed out in in the code.
Yes.
Instead of policies.
You raised very great issues. I'm glad that we talked about it, it's important to understand and and I'm glad that your questions were answered and that we're going to follow all of that and policy also, those details.
Yep.
Also will come at the council for approval, so that's not something that's outside of your your approval either. So thank you so much. Any other questions or thoughts? Otherwise, I'll ask for a reading. Please, sir.
City of Medical Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 1123. An ordinance of the city of Medical Lake, Washington, replacing chapter 11.08 and repealing chapter 11.16 in title 11 of the city of Medical Lake municipal code.
I entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussion. Ordinance 1123, right of way permit, the use requirement code passes unanimously. There is no executive session, no emergency ordinance is. Any upcoming agenda items and is on the mind of council?
Just wanted to bring up the Silver Lake Water and Sewer.
Thank you.
Again, if if.
Yes.
There's interest in discussing.
Yes, please. You want to give a quick brief summary of that?
Sure, so we, Mayor, myself, Kate Peterson and Cara Rowe took a legislative trip to Olympia in January to share with the legislature the plans that were in place with our prospectus and and it was a great trip. They definitely have an awareness now of the opportunity that's before us. The result of the legislative session is that the discretionary capital funds for the sixth legislative district and the amount of $300,000 were appropriated to help the engineering effort continue for that. And to to this date, that's the extent of of what we have to carry that project forward. Mayor discussing, the mayor's been discussing with Commissioner Al French, how the county can take ownership of of this project as well, we can continue to be advocates moving forward. The FEMA assistance that is there, we're going to explore avenues with that as well to see what funding may come available to help fund that. We've heard concerns from citizens that are not interested in paying the bill and that's not really our intent either. It really was this opportunity came, we see the disaster, we know the resources are coming to assist. How can we make the best possible decisions and and take the best possible actions at this time to remedy the public health concerns, the environmental sustainability concerns and the public safety concerns? So we'll continue to pursue every avenue. There are federal federal cycles that are open now as well, so there is an opportunity to continue seeking some funds through various pools to help see what we can come up with and and continue to work with our legislature and the state to see what can happen for making that move forward.
I did see Senator Schessler on Saturday and we had this discussion again. You know, those in the legislature are favorable to help us, it's just we were that mid-cycle and so we'll be contacting his staff and get this request in along with the other, the temporary housing request in at first opportunity and he felt that it had a favorable standing to move forward, that we did a good job of presenting it and that it made sense, it was just didn't land in the timing. And so, you know, say your prayers and be good and we'll hope that we can get that in on time and and be first in line. And I think that we'll we should get some some movement that's that'll so.
So if the county takes the lead on that, are we going to have to have some agreement with them because they'd be using our water system and our waste treatment plan? So we'd have to have a, you know, local agreement with the county?
Yeah, we're hoping to be in partnership with them, that we have the services, this is in the county, we, you know, and then we're working in private land, I mean, there's a lot of things to to. But we're hoping they'll partner so because it's their people, right? And legislative District Nine, which is. And Legislative District Nine, um, which is, uh, Senator Schessler, Mary Die, um, Representative Schmick, they're all, that's their. So we're trying to get all of the partners to come in and, and support this, and, yeah, there will be agreements with the county for sure.
So, included in that is, uh, another access road in there along with sewer and water that goes north and south?
There, there are, uh, when you look at the prospectus that we share, I'm happy to share that out again, the initial perspective, that it has multiple access roads. As well as hydrants, right now, there's no fire suppression down there, um, along with the water and sewer for the, the public health.
And as we dig up the space to put that infrastructure in the ground, uh, the roads will have to be replaced. So this, the, the plan is to restore those roads at twenty-two foot wide city standards, uh, plus, uh, multi-use paths, uh, as well. And, and making connections that don't currently exist, so that there is options. Uh, so, and, um, just something to consider as well, not all egress options have to be open for use a hundred percent of the time. Uh, so, uh, like for instance, the Bible camp could, and they're, they're interested in exploring these options as well. Having a gravel road that allows another way out, but it's gated. And it's only gonna be used in those emergency circumstances, so if they need to drive through, they can, but it's gonna continue. It, it wouldn't be a, a constantly used road, but it would be available in emergency circumstances.
Right-of-ways would have to be purchased to get to nine oh two, and would be else, cause you'd have to go across private ground someplace.
Yeah, there, there are, uh, right-of-ways that would allow that access currently, they just have to be developed as transportation routes and not, um, undeveloped land.
So, while we're sort of on that subject, what's the latest with the trail negotiated with the state about the trail in the park? Since our lease is coming due in two months.
There's these dominoes lined up, um, and so we're backed up to start, go ahead, Sunny, I'll, I'll let you start.
Sure, uh, the conversations with the state, um, continue, there, there's a number of agreements that, um, all kind of interlace, uh, like a bowl of spaghetti, uh, hard to know where one ends and the other be, begins, um. Wastewater agreement, uh, our, our water use agreement with them, and, and then our land use agreements with them. And so those, uh, conversations are being held, uh, they're, they're fruitful. Uh, but there's just like, for instance, this, uh, this underground fire that's taking place is really, um, taking everybody away from what their intentions are, uh, to focus on something that's a little more pertinent and pressing in the matter, um, currently, so. They're dealing with everything similar, uh, as fast as they can, so. But we've, uh, we've reached out with some plans and, and options, and we look forward to hearing back from them and continuing that conversation. It may very well be, uh, I wouldn't be surprised if we have another extension before we have, uh, a resolution. But, uh, it's still moving forward and, um, in an encouraging fashion. Uh, I would offer, um, so we're pursuing, uh, Recreation Conservation Office grants to get funding to help us in acquisition of the property. And, uh, our partners at the SHS wrote a letter of support for that, so, um, I, that, that's encouraging, to say the least.
It's nice to see the partnership continuing to, to develop there and that we're, um, all talking the same language. It seems like, especially the fire, uh, revealed so many, um, gaps and needs for consolidation of water and sewer and, you know. And the land use too, and so, um, we're in a good place and the, the conversations are, are fruitful, and they do continue. And nobody's languishing right now, it's, um, the, the, this fire over the hill, you know, kind of, uh, put a pause button until we, um, can decide how that's gonna be mitigated and, and the timeframe, um, but then we should be able to move forward, so. I, thank you for asking those really great questions. Uh, anything else, the, um, question that council may have, or some other topic?
I just wanted to say that, uh, and I'll use the fire, um, we have a lot of irons in the fire, or dominoes lined up. Um, city has a lot of projects and grants hanging out there, and I just wanna say how much I appreciate staff and how hard you guys are working, for sure, and making things happen.
Yes.
Scott, Steve.
Yeah.
Your crews. Uh, you got normal stuff we're dealing with every year, you know, spring cleaning and streets and, uh, you guys are doing a lot of really good stuff all over, so.
That's true.
Appreciate all the hard work.
I wanna.
A lot that you're doing.
Yeah, I wanna add to that too, the phenomenal work they've done, not only in, um, you know, we had the fire then. And they never missed a beat, all of the projects continually move forward, all of the engineering, you know, all of those things. Um, and then we added this other, you know, water sewer project, uh, engineering on top of that, and, um, they just didn't miss a beat at all, so. Um, all the regular work, on top of the firework, on top of more plans, on top of, uh, continuing to seek grants to complete streets and, and, you know, those things, and so, uh, at the end of this summer, um, downtown's gonna look really different. Um, and, and I'm proud already of the work that's been done, and thank you for mentioning that. Because it's true, we have the great, we have such great staff. Fantastic.
Yeah, you're doing a big enough job, and we're, um, we're gonna try and keep it positive as much as possible for as long as possible, cause um, everyone's gonna be impacted by road construction in Medical Lake. And, uh, we'll probably hear about it, and then they'll be grateful when it's done.
You know, makes me think like, in back in the, you know, the forties, fifties, sixties, it's progress. So anyway, good things coming. Um, interest of citizen comment, anybody online, uh, that would like to make a comment? Oh, I want, any comments from those online? Um, any comments for those of the audience? Okay, I'm all hearing none then, I will move on to, um, Sandra, who would conclude by, Councilmember Pritchard. And we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty minutes concluded, thank you ladies and gentlemen.